Meeting called to order. Let the record reflect, all board members are present with the exception of Mr. Matthew Kern. Chair would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of reviewing with superintendent of schools and attorney for Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to possible meeting with former coach. Reviewing with superintendent of schools and attorney of Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to possible appointment of former coach to coaching position. Three, reviewing with superintendent of schools and attorney for Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to letter from concerned parent concerning cross-country practice. Four, reviewing situation concerning vacancy imposition of district clerk. Five, reviewing with superintendent of schools, letter from parent complaining about administrator. Six, reviewing with superintendent of schools and attorney for Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to cross-country coach email to parents of student athletes. Seven, reviewing with superintendent of schools and interim assistant superintendent for human resources, various personnel issues. Eight, reviewing with superintendent of schools and attorney for Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to possible creation of director of school facilities position. Nine, reviewing with superintendent of schools and attorney for Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to public participation portion of board meetings in relation to existing board policy. Ten, reviewing with superintendent of schools and attorney for Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to public statement to be made by board president concerning coaching position. Eleven, reviewing with superintendent of schools and attorney for Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to adding the board policy to Board Policy 2350, a board member comment section. Move, please.
So, some move.
Paul, thank you. Second. Mr. McKenzie, thank you. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Abstain, stay, move. Please entertain executive and call public session to order. Please stand for the question.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect again, all members of Board of Education are present with the exception of Mr. Matthew Kern. Minutes of the meetings of July 10th, August 9th and July 10th, three are being tabled, so we will not be taking a load off today. Superintendent's comments?
We have a very special guest here, Sandy Jeanette, our representative with Rockland Voces. Sandy, would you please come forward?
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Sandy.
This is something familiar faces. I represent Suffolk Central on the Rockland Voces Board of Education. There are nine of us. Each one of us represents one of the Rockland School Districts and then we have one person who is a member at large. So that makes up the Rockland Voces Board of nine members. I brought tonight with me, who's going to talk about some programs, Kim Bell, who's the principal of Career Technical Education at Voces. So, Kim, thank you very much, Dr. Adams. You'll do this out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Dr. Adams, for giving the opportunity to address your board. I understand that many of you, and I can't see everybody, that many of you are new in your position. So I just wanted to take a couple moments to talk about the logistics of CTEC and how we operate. We have three different programs at CTEC. We have our tax program, which is formerly the GED, where students get a high school Golden City diploma. And then we have our regular CTEC programs that we're sitting down about, the auto, the cosmetology. And we have two different levels of those. We have our CTE level program and our CSP level program, which I'll get a little bit into the differences in those in a minute. So when you send the students to CTEC, they come to us for a half day. They spend a half day with us and they spend the half a day with you. You pay the tuition and you provide the lesson. So as far as the difference between the CTE and the CSP programs, the CSP programs are structured for students with disabilities who have IEPs, who need a smaller class size, who need the curriculum delivered at a little bit of a slower pace. Students in those programs typically are either pursuing a skills achievement or a CDOTS credential and are going right out into the workforce. We never say that a CSP student does not go to college because we have had that happen as well. These students also pursue industry credentials, which makes them much more employable when upon completion of their education. Our CTE level programs, they've changed a lot. I can say Career Technical Education has changed a great deal over my 22 years working in the field. Our students that participate in Career Tech Ed are earning multiple industry certifications, and I'll give some examples of that. And they're also earning college credits. We have an agreement with Rockland Community College, where our students are getting transcriptable or transportable college credits that they can take with them and transfer them to colleges all over the country. So a perfect example of that is our Criminal Justice and Fire Science Program. Students that are in two years in that program can graduate with six college credits and they also earn certifications in New York State Security Guard, firefighter one, which now has a different name that I can never remember, so I apologize for that. And also 911 dispatch, CPR and AED. So they're living with four different certifications plus the college credits. Within our digital design program, students can earn up to four Adobe certifications, and that's the software used in digital design. And also six college credits. Students that are Health Science Academy can earn Patient Care Technician Certification. They can earn New York State Nursing Assistant Certification and three college credits through our CC. So again, as you can see, things have changed quite a lot in the career tech field. Now for some specific district data. Your enrollments at CTEC last year were 41. This year, they're 57. So we are in growth mode at CTEC, not only here at Suffolk Central, but also across the county. We're actually starting the school year with 80 more students than we did last year, which for us, that's quite a lot considering, you know, we're such a small county. Scholarships were really impressive for students in Suffolk Central last year. $241,000 students that came to Suffolk Central are shared students earned. We had one student who graduated from our Health Academy. She's certified nurse assistant. She did multiple rotations in different healthcare facilities across the county. So she not only got the classroom experience, she got the real-world experience. Now she's got her certification and she earned a $40,000 scholarship to Dominican College where she is pursuing a nursing degree. Another student, I love these stories, I could go on and on all night when I know I haven't the time. Student named Nick who came through our auto program. His parents always keep us updated on how he's doing. He earned a scholarship to Ohio Technical College as well as multiple ASE or Automotive Service Excellence certifications. While he was with us, we love acronyms in education in general, CTE. And while he was at, he's pursuing a degree in diesel equipment technology. And while he was there, he totally thrived. He found his niche and he took off. He is on the leadership council, he earned honor roll, perfect attendance, and he's a student leader. So, you know, I just wanted to share that story. We always love hearing about what our graduates are doing. What's new at CTEC? So because we are in growth mode, that allows us to expand programming, which is always a lot of fun. Over the past three years, we've incorporated a new welding program, which we just expanded for this coming school year. Cyber technology, where, you know, you all know the jobs, it's a hot area right now. And students coming out with cyber technology degrees are earning a lot of money. And starting this September, we are starting animal science program, where we'll have one section that will be a CSP level for the students with disabilities and the other section will be more like a vet science program on the CTE level. Lastly, because we know that we have a growing number of English language learners across the county, districts have asked us to help out with that and add supports within our current program. So we're adding an ENL task program to our course schedule. So we're adding language supports to our current task program. And also, just as an aside, we typically have two or three students from Suffolk that come through our task program during the course of the year. And we're also adding language supports to certain CTE and CSP programs, different ones that we've handpicked that will, you know, evaluate the students and decide what's the best placement for them. So just one more comment. I always get a lot of questions about our teachers. Our CTE teachers are typically career changers. And quite honestly, they could make a lot more money working in their chosen field. However, these are people that have decided that they want to dedicate themselves or for the remainder of their time working to children. So I have a very, very passionate crew of teachers and that's seen by the amount of industry certifications and college credits that, you know, they bring in to just add to their programs. So as I said earlier, the career in tech has changed quite a bit over the past two decades that I've been working in. We, you know, really value our partnership with Suffolk Central and it's really wonderful to see the numbers in CTEC increasing. And we hope that we can continue our partnership for a very long time. So, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions?
You have a lot of acronyms in there. So, in a nutshell, two or three sentences summarize it for us about the program. All the great things, there's so many great things. You've got vocational, new programs, increase in enrollment, scholarships. Try to just do this with quick bullet points.
Okay.
None of the acronyms. Thank you.
We give students opportunity to learn employability skills that will help them into the workforce or into post-secondary or for most of our students, or both. So, you know, students that are interested in one of our programs, they get to. I tell the students when I do recruitment, it's test drive and what you want to do. And success for us is even if you don't like it, because before mom, dad spent, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in college, you know whether you like this particular field or not.
And to the benefit of the board, especially the new board members, the program for Suffolk Central had been on a decline for a while. So the, I think, the new initiatives, the new programs, cybersecurity, all these new offerings for the kids is why we're seeing the rise. You know, it's almost a 50% increase this year. And so we're looking forward to a strong partnership with Voces. So thank you for coming over this evening.
Thank you.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank Sandy Jeanette for being our representative on the Voces board. I don't know if a lot of people know that. Thank you for that. And I'd like to thank Ms. Kim Bell, the principal of Career Technical Education, for the presentation, all the work you do with our students. We really appreciate it.
And I think, being a board member and not being a professional staff at Voces, I think what struck me most is what Kim said, that students who come out of this program, if they're not on a disability track, many of them become industry certified in the field that they've chosen. And that's a leg up right there, whether it's automobile or anything else, healthcare.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think I should give you a second. Dr. Adams will continue with his segment.
So also under my comments will be tax rate calculation and the reserve balances. And all this under my comments, I won't be presenting. It will be Reese Isole. Anthony's in the back of the room. Do you want to slide in front in case there are any additional questions? Thank you, Anthony.
You don't want to give it a crack? Okay, so every year, this time of year, we have to set the tax rate for the district president. And being that, we always do a summary, but this year because we have three new board members, we had anyone, we have a little idea of what goes into the tax rate calculation. So even though during May, we vote on a budget and we think, okay, we're going to have this 2% increase, that's what we voted on this year, or it's 1.5, whatever it is. There's many other factors that influence the tax rates up, which is the actual amount that's collected by the town in what that percentage is. So some of the factors are levy amount, which we all decided on when we voted. But a big factor, big factors, are the assessed value of our town, which it's, we're actually three towns, but the majority is Ramapo. There's also some state lands and Haverhill, and Tuxedo that are part of this district. And the equalization rates for the town, which vary depending on what's going on. And some of the exemptions. Over a couple of years ago, we voted on veterans tax exemption. That's other people, it's not a town. And we have some other exemptions for clergy, firefighters, veteran facilities. Once you put all those factors together, that's how we get the rate per thousand. So the tax levy itself is the amount the taxpayers are going to spend. We calculate that based on our budget. Now, either we get all our state aid or any other kind of revenue, that's how we come up with the number that's going to be assessed to the taxpayers. And it's different by town. Again, we have a little bit in Haverhill, a little bit in Tuxedo, but the majority is Ramapo. So just to give you an idea, we do this every year, what assessed value has been. Except for a couple of times, and actually the one in 1450 was actually something the town did that maybe kind of a, there was a property that really shouldn't have been non-taxable, they put it back on. Our taxable value, our assessed value has been going down significantly. Last year went down like eight or nine million, this year it's over six million. That is a big effect from the rest of the taxpayers whose assessed value has now changed. This year, the assessment was for two reasons. Squires gate homes were in flooding lots. Those have now been bought out by the state. Those become zero assessed value. That's $600,000 of assessed value. And then there's a utility agreement that the town entered into with the school district a few years ago. That is part of the reason our tax, our assessed value has been going down every year. Next year, it'll have some sort of significant impact as well. Once we get all the information from the different towns, you can see that the assessed value in total is over $600 million. But you have this equalization rate, Haverhill, a few years ago, actually was at 100% of the taxable value. But over the years, that's changed, as everything does. And we come up with a true tax rate. But as you see, 96.75% of this is the town Ramapo. Because of the rate change and because of the assessed value change and the equalization rate change, even though we raised taxes 2% levy to levy, so the amount that we earned, we charged last year versus the amount this year was 2%, you can see that the taxes are going up 2.93% in the town Ramapo. So I always thought about that when we do the budget, that we really have to pay attention, that even though, you know, you have to say, oh, it's gone up 2%, but it never goes up that amount, usually higher. So you can see now, the rate for thousand is $191. So over the years, the same, here's the rule again before, this shows you, it's very interesting, what the tax levy was, so the percentage we thought we were raising it. Even in 1617, when we had raised the taxes at nine in total, the taxes went up almost 1%. So this year it's 2%, but it's 2.9%. And that's a factor of the assessed value and the equalization. Does anybody have questions on that before I go over to the reserve? Okay? Get it all, huh? Now we'll look at the fund balance and the reserve balances. So when we do the end of the year budget, we look at our revenue in total, our expenditures in total, other factors of the change in incomparances, some of the interest we might get, some of the reserve projects that the public has voted on, that we're going to move into the capital fund. And then how much money needs to go into some of these reserves that we've set up over the years? You know, we have the tax search area reserve, which we have at 100%. It's 100% last week. I've gotten more and more in, so it's not 100% anymore. Those numbers have constantly changed, or even some, we need to get them in. Last year, for the first time, we had set up an employee benefits reserve. And that's for, I'm sorry, that's for benefits of when we have the retirement incentive, we could set up a reserve for the portion of the retirement incentive. It's actually a benefit. So we're paying people sick days when they leave, the teachers. Actually, we pay all our people, some sort, not all people, but most of them, some sort of number for sick days that we could put in a reserve. Just, we used to put it in the budget. It makes it a whole clean amount, because now we have an idea what it's going to be and it fluctuates all over the place, at least we have some sort of reserve for at least part of it. And then we have the employee retirement reserve. Now, that was another one a couple of years ago. But even though that is much, much smaller than the teacher's retirement reserve, we're still able to put in about two years' worth, which we don't have the full two years, for the employees reserve, so that's a big number. Because over the years, if you paid attention a few years ago, the rates went through the roof. And that severely impacted our budget of how much we could spend because we were well over what we thought was left there. So over the years, the tax, and I do an employee's benefit, I think in January, and you'll see the fluctuations in those numbers. And in the end, when we did all these calculations, basically we had $1.4 million left over. What we had talked about is setting, it's our capital reserve, which we voted on, not this year and last year, that we could put away up to $10 million for future capital projects. This year, with what we have left over, we were able to put away $1.4 million. Okay? I just want to show you some of the petitions. Many of them we get every year. This is what causes what actually was a $4.2 million tax search area possible liability. These are all the names of the companies. Those in red are the ones that we didn't have last year. So you see, many times you'll see the same ones over and over, but this year we have a few extra ones. It's a lot of money, and it's gone up significantly over the years. So just, I just want to show you, because you'll see on your, on the resolution that you have to do, and also I'm showing that it's $1.5 million, even though the new taxes are 4.2, we settled some claims. They came out of the reserve, which we do every year. And then there's some interest that gets added to the reserve because obviously we're earning interest on our money. And that's why your resolution, even though it's $4.2 million in new potential liabilities, we're only putting away 1.9. So this breaks out the reserves a little bit easier for everyone to sit. For example, the capital reserve, we have $3.3 million. We have a little interest. When I said we had leftover, the 1.4, that we're putting in there. And then we're transferring to the capital fund actually the last two years of approved budgeted go projects. The tax search reserve, again, it's a debt change of $1.9 million, but it's 4.2, less than $2 million plus that we either paid out some of it and we didn't need it. Unemployment reserve is just used to, that fluctuates all over the place. Some years it's much larger, some years it's smaller. Obviously, a few years ago, when we laid off a lot of people, it was $200,000 or $300,000. So it's just a reserve we can put in the budget, which is good, so we don't have to think about it. It's right there. The insurance reserve, we used over the years for capital project issue. You know, we had a problem a couple of years ago with DM with the middle school and signs and all that work they did there. Even before that, we had another problem with another budget that we did with the big projects at the middle school. But that's something we want to take down over the next couple of years. Debt service reserve is actually interest that we earned when we borrowed on the bonds originally, because we had a $65 million project and then we had an $18 million project. And then interest rates were good. So we had borrow, obviously, before we needed the money to spend, so we made some money on that. That can only be used to pay down debt. And as you are all aware, we're going to have a big cliff starting next year between our debt and our aid. So costs is going to be over $2.5 million, I believe, next year. We want to use some of that money and some of the insurances to start helping us so that we don't have this big shortfall we're going to the taxpayers for. The employee benefits reserve, explained a little before. This is the amount of money if people left tomorrow, anyone that's 55 or 62, and anyone who had a balance here of vacation for the 12-month employees, we might have to pay out if they all left. But this is only the benefits portion, it's not the total reserve. And the employee retirement reserve, which you can put up to two years, which is about $1,300,000 each year, so we're not, we're not even close to two years. That's just just employees, so that's not any kind of certified people or teachers. They don't allow that reserve. They talk about it all the time, and it'd be nice if they actually did. Oops, oops. Oh. So this shows you a little bit about the reserve analysis, and I've talked a little bit about this. The capital reserve are a product of their, their outline and their annual plan. As you know, we voted on some of them this year, we voted on some of them last year. We'll continue to improve issues in our building. I believe Anthony, last year and the year before, gave us a little bit of outline of how we're going to spend basically $17 million. $7 million we come over, out of the budget over 10 years, and $10 million we come out of the reserve, which we need to fund, which is why I want to put the 1.4 in there. The tax search reserve also, we use it when we settle reserves, but that's something that's probably going to have to reduce as this building aid over the next few years decreases and we have this big shortfall. We're not going to be able to be at 100% anymore. The unemployment reserve, that's unbudgeted, so we have a reserve out there to pay for that. The insurance reserve also, it's used for uninsured expenses. Again, we're going to reduce that over the next year or two to pay for some of these building aid issues. Debt service, like I explained, is only used for debt payments. It will also cover some of the building aid. The employee benefits is for, we used to budget for the retirement incentive. We used to budget approximately how or what we thought we could bet, but, or we might have a liability of, but we don't budget it anymore. We have the reserve out there, much cleaner. And the last one, the employee retirement reserve. Again, like I was saying, a few years ago, we had these huge fluctuations in these rates. They went through the roof and they cost us a ton of money. And that's probably part of the reason I've had a think about changing some of the things that we were doing, because we had this state format we had to have. So we want to keep it a little more consistent, the capital reserve.
Thanks, Reese.
Any questions?
I understand this pretty much, because I just nailed it for all the years. But I do have a question.
Sure.
It's about OPAP, other unemployment benefits. What happened was that they changed the rules and they wanted governments to fund the expenses that you're going to have in the future for people who are going to retire in the future. So it's not pay-as-you-go for health insurance for those people who have been turned 65 and retired and pay for debt. They actually want you to save for it in the future. I'm just wondering if there's anything in that employment benefit reserve that's for OPAP?
Not enough.
That's a little lower this year, but it's like $80,000. Maybe $90,000. Yeah. So what, what I, I mean, now that we have this shortfall for the building fund, it's kind of hard to reserve for those other things that are like the other retirement benefits that you have for people. And what some places are doing, they're just doing a little bit at a time just to serve with faith that they're putting on.
Right. And that's kind of like what we're trying, hopefully they'll have a tax search reserve. They'll set that up so people can put some money away. I don't know what's going to happen in the next few years. We probably won't have the money to put away. At least like this year, we were able to put a little bit more away for them. Yeah, it's huge numbers for us. We're never even going to put it away. But if you have that little cushion at least, so the rates go up because of everything that's going on. And you'll see in January, when we do the employee's benefits, that you'll see our retirees and our active employees get closer. So we're going to have many retirees soon as we have active employees that we're paying for. And it's And it's a smaller number dollar-wise.
You just said Medicare.
I just said Medicare.
But, but also, for, for, you know, for people in the public, if you ever looked at the financial statements of the school district, you would see in the footnote that talks about the other retirement benefits, OPEP, and they'll show you that $80 million is out there. It just happens to be unfunded. In most places, it is unfunded. I mean, when, when you have a, a very rich community, and, and they collect it on taxes, they'll start funding for it, but it's, it's rare.
Yes, that's very rare. But it's good to see it, because I'm sure it's the first time for everybody, very highly, to see how much money we add to a potential liability over the years. So it's a big, huge number, a very good number. Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, so if I could go back to this tax search reserve slide, I think it's just two before the last.
Eric's going to help me out. So I can do the last one, right? You got it? There we go. This one? The one with four? One with four, there you go. Yeah.
So basically, the way I understand this, because I'm an accountant, like Melissa, so my questions are simpler, that the $1,904,000, one million nine hundred and four thousand one hundred and forty-nine, is, is money that was older searched and has to be...
No. What happened was, we had, this year, we had four million to renew.
New ones, yes.
But some came back that were settled for zero, were settled, like, we take, sorry, Navarre is $600,000, something thousand, but then one of the years was settled for zero, that came back in. So this is basically the net number that we have to transfer. If I did it differently, I would have put $4 million in and taken $2 million out, but instead of that, I was just giving a net number.
But is that those that are aging to search?
No, you'll see that in the actual resolution. You'll see the three years, or, or, closer to the three years coming out, and we look at them and go back in if we need to put them back.
So that, not, not on this calculation?
Not on that calculation, no. This was just to clearly show you, because I'm sure in people's heads, like, wait, it's $4 million, too, but we're only putting away $1 million, nine, clearly not at 100%, but we are, because of the money that came back in.
So where, where do you calculate the, the ones that are aging that have to come back every three years?
I actually, we actually look at every single one every year. It's not like we just look at the older ones. We look at every, every, every year, we look at everyone.
Does the three years require?
It's more than three years required to bring it in.
Yes, right. And so where, where is that map in this calculation?
It's not in that calculation, but you'll see it on your, on the actual resolution. The money that's coming in, the ones that are older than three years, the money that's going out, is the ones that are newer than three years. Sorry. They're going back in, or the ones that said, yes, they have to go back, plus the new ones. It's the net, the new ones.
Excellent. Thank you, that was my only question. Thanks very much. I had, of course, other board members, what items you're voting on today that are dependent on this particular presentation. There are several action items on today's agenda, based on this tax calculation and this map, so.
Yes.
Everybody's good?
Very well.
Thank you. Especially with the numbers coming in from the town, pretty close to the meeting. Hence, this meeting is scheduled, just so everybody knows, that this time of year, awaiting all the towns sending their figures.
We were actually on time this year, which was nice, but still, you know, they sometimes make changes, so.
Slowly, please, here. On action items, well, sorry, public participation. This is on, sorry. On action items only, so it has to be items 2.01 onwards, so any public participation related to action items. There's a statement that the board would like to deliver before we invite our public to participate. Our board encourages public participation on school-related matters at our meetings. We have two times in our regular meeting agenda for public comment. The first one is prior to the action items, the second one takes place later in the agenda and is an opportunity to comment on any matter related to district business. According to Board Policy 1230, speakers should address their remarks to the Board President. Now, while the board encourages public comment, the board will not permit any discussion concerning individual students or individual district personnel. Federal law requires that we ensure the privacy rights of our students, and we ask all in attendance to abide by that. For example, comments about a student's disciplinary record or entitlement to special education services pursuant to an IDP will not be permitted. In regards to district personnel, Board Policy 1400 provides that comments and/or concerns should be directed to the proper administrative personnel. References to a particular staff member who can be identified by his or her position title, even without mentioning the staff member's name, will not be permitted. The president is authorized to discontinue any comments that violate policy. Please. Help us follow policy as we should, and your, it was the duration of time, three minutes per speaker, with a 30-minute hold for all speakers in each segment. So at this point, we open the mic to public participation on agenda items. On action items, sorry. Who's the timekeeper? Do you guys want to keep us a few minutes? Thank you. Give us a wee.
He went, since he was doing his clock, he must have done it once. I don't want to waste any seconds yet.
No, we'll let you know, but we just stopped putting this stuff watch, because that was not a popular addition, so we're doing away with that. So somebody will give you a signal, and we'll let you finish the sentence or the...
Can we have a resolution on what the signal will be?
And please identify yourself. Go ahead.
Michael Curley, and I guess I'm talking about number 2.32. And it could apply to many different things, but that's the one it applies here. As we all know, Rock County Voltsies had a pretty bad thing with the school buses and the funds and the money missing and whatnot, or parts, buses were fixed wrong and stuff like that. So I, I just want to point out that, as you probably know and should know, that our attorney, I think you know his name, we have one attorney for the school district here, right? Voltsies also has the same attorney. We're doing contracts with them, all right? I think you have to reconsider that, on who our attorney is, or who their attorney is. You can't represent Volts' master's family, family, and represent the school district and the taxpayers. So I think you need to look into that strongly, all right? The, how much am I up to?
One minute.
All right, good. The, I don't know, again, I'm doing this because I'm the 91 through 2.01, your thing, you, you asked the public to tell you this. So I don't know if there's any whistle blow, Amani, if there is, please send it on to me. But you, you really should consider this. Are you guys aware that you both have the same attorney?
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right. Well, I just point out, if someone's doing a house closing, the buyer and seller doesn't have the same attorney. If someone's doing a contract, the two different people don't have the same attorney. It's not in the best interest of the taxpayers, or even of the children, because you can't always give the good opinion for that. I also point out that not only should you just have, should you have an attorney for the Board of Education and if the administration want, you should have a separate attorney for the Board of Education itself, because your concerns are not always the same concerns. As I sat here, the, the, the four meetings of my life, as I sat here, I've seen the difference, where you can have different understanding of what things are. And you're not going to get that from the same attorney, so I would strongly consider getting another attorney. We have a budget, I guess, of $135 million or more, all right? That, that budget is bigger than the town council budget, the bills of suffrants, the bills of sheriffs, the bills of Montebello, all put in one. So you're not, you're not doing a, a proper service to the taxpayers. So you, you can do, is you can break up the funds to that attorney and give him, you know, see if someone else wants it, all right? You know, the, the, my main thing would be you need separate attorneys for sure, and secondarily, people are starting to come to me now with concerns in community, all right? And that's why I'm on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing there are none, I will close the segments of the agenda, and we will move to action Action item 2.01 to 2.28, we are adding an item in 2.28, 2.38, I apologize. And that's an item that is shared with all board members regarding changing the number of, as I mentioned, attendees from the previously voted, remove three to four, with the understanding that everybody's commuting and everybody's staying over since it's in New York City. So I'd like to add an agenda item. I guess it has to be a motion, since it's not there. So I moved to add an agenda item. You have authority to add it. Perfect.
So, so a discussion with the board about this, for some of the Policy 2521, it references that there has to be approval by the board for the payment of board training. And so, under Policy 2342, in terms of setting the agenda, I have the ability to add this agenda item unless the board objects. And so the item that will be added is a resolution that changes the number of attendees from three board members to four board members. Those being Don Karn, Alyssa Reamer, Angus McKenzie, and Amani DeGane. And as Amani just pointed out, they, they will not be staying in hotels in New York City, because they're close enough, you know, bus, chair ride, train, however they get there, but they're, they're going to, they're not going to spend the night.
They'll take the school bus.
Yeah, school bus. So the, the resolution pursuant to 2521 will be posted that reflects going from three to four attendees.
This is required by the auditors. Teresa will concur that we take a vote, not necessarily with the names of who's attending conferences, but the number of people approved for a given conference. So thank you, everybody, my board colleagues, for agreeing to travel together and save some money so the fourth person can attend. These events are very helpful, and thank you for adding that to the agenda, Dr. Adams. At this point, I will ask if anybody would like to pull any items off a consent agenda.
I'd like to pull 2.05.
Okay, Mr. 55, you want to vote differently, that's why you're pulling it. Anybody else?
I just had a question on 3.01.
Did you say three?
3.01.
Not there yet.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, not yet. So, and that's going to be information, so you'll be able to ask all the questions more. Any other items to be pulled? So consent agenda, you need a motion to approve 2.01 up to 2.04, and 2.06 up to 2.38. Anybody moving?
I'm sorry.
Motion?
2.39, the new item?
2.38 is the new item.
2.38.
2.38 is a new item. There was a space holder for it, but it wasn't written, and we're not consent agenda, 2.01 to 4, 2.04, and also 2.06 to 2.38. So, thank you, Alyssa Reamer. And second?
Sure.
Angus McKenzie, thank you. I'm just repeating this to help Heather do. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining? Any nays? None? So all in favor of unanimous. Now, 2.05, we need a motion to adopt 2.05. Move.
Second.
Mr. Donnelly, second. Any discussion? No discussion? So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Nay? None? And one student?
I'm abstaining from the vote, because she's a family member.
Thank you. And the item is moved. Thank you very much. We now move on to information items. Tuition-paying students is the first item on information items.
Everybody should have a handout for them that looks like this. And this indicates, or I was asked to provide information on those students that are paying tuition. And so what you'll see on that printout are 19 names, 17 of which are actually paying tuition. The first row that's kind of highlighted in fuchsia color is a student that had been attending Cherry Lane for several years. The, the family was commuting from New Jersey, they've now moved further away, and so the student has, is no longer attending Cherry Lane. The, the row that's highlighted in blue, the student was coming from Warwick to attend school here at the high school, the family has now moved into the school district, so that student will be attending our schools, plus two of his siblings. And then that, the remaining 17 are students that were expecting to enroll in school this fall. They've been approved to enroll. Eight of them will be attending Cherry Lane, so eight of the 17 are Cherry Lane. Two will be at Montebello, one at Sloughsburg, one at Viola, one at the middle school and Ford Southern High School. And that's on the flip side of the printout, although it's, a couple of the letters are a little bit blurred there. So I'd been asked to provide the information a couple of meetings ago, and it was pulled from the agenda last time. So this is the information current through last Friday.
Okay, we invite questions?
I just have one question. The rates that these people are paying are the rates that we adopted, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question also. We had discussed the possibility of allowing tuition payments for speaking in the Biden program. Are we allowing that, or are they seeing a vote on that? Are we allowing that, or am I going to see a vote on that?
There is. That's something that the board is certainly permitted to do. The, currently, we have seven openings at our pre-k, meaning that we pay approximately $200,000 for the staffing for pre-k. And we get about $2,700 per student, per session, morning and afternoon. Students can't attend both sessions. So the $2,700 does not come close to covering the cost of the program. We had been approached by a couple of staff members that, they're not residents of the school district, and they said, "You're not receiving the money. You have an opening. If we paid the $2,700 instead of the state paying the $2,700, would you allow my son or daughter to attend school?" And so that would be something for the board to consider, and it's something that if the board's interested in allowing that, that to occur, we could get up to seven more people, which would offset our costs by, you know, 17, $18,000, if all seven, but we don't have all seven.
I believe on the, the discussion came up on our August 9 meeting, the board decided to move ahead with allowing external non-residents to be tuition paying at the rate of $4,000 for our pre-k program. So we can go ahead and have that as a, as an action item as soon as possible.
Okay.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah?
I have a question also. Looks like there's four students that are coming from Tuxedo. Is that a result of our recruitment drive there and enrollment, or is that just?
One yes, and three of them were former residents of the district. They moved at the end of the school year to Tuxedo, and now they'd like to attend school here.
Thank you.
So that's my follow-up question. How many of the 17 are actually residents who moved out and are wishing to continue in school? How many would you say?
Definitely three. And I would have to check to see if there were more than three.
I believe we had said three from Tuxedo, and I recall Cherry Lane also, a few of those.
The three that lived in Tuxedo were former students at Cherry Lane.
Okay. So if we can, if we can, I think it's set in fore and figured to know how many of those were already in our district and moved out and are just coming back to our schools, and how many are brand new groups that our marketing strategy is reaching out to, so that we can figure out how strategic planning as a board, how to improve our marketing and how to really reach out to more people, how we're doing.
Okay.
Because, you know, 17 is a great number, but if they're already our residents and are no longer, I don't know that I'd get excited about that figure.
Sure.
Just my, my question. Any other questions? Okay, great. So we'll follow up on that, just strategic planning, you know, procedures and plans for the future, because that's one of the most important things that we need to do. And there's another information item. There's another statement. Today's my statements day, that Board of Education would like to deliver. So, um, this is an item that has come up at many of our meetings for quite some time now. And Board of Education felt strong about some sort of information sharing with our public, in order for everyone to be aware of the information that we learned as a board. Over the last six months, there has been a great deal of discussion concerning how the school district fills coaching positions for our various athletic teams. As a public school district, we have in place separate labor agreements with each of our seven different groups, which together represent most of our employees. These contracts are required by New York State's Taylor Law. The contract for each group has specific employment positions that belong exclusively to that particular group. The Board of Education is not permitted to appoint anyone to any of those positions other than a member of that particular group. Our largest bargaining unit, the Suffolk Education Association, represents all of our teachers and teaching assistants, not only in the academic subject areas, but also regarding overseeing all extracurricular activities and coaching of athletic teams. The district's contract with the teachers' unit requires that every coaching position for each of our sports be filled by a member of the teachers' unit, unless there are no members interested in the position. Despite numerous erroneous reports and contrary to speculation in our community, all coaching appointments for the current school year have been based on recommendations by the superintendent of schools to the Board of Education, consistent with the district's contract with the Suffolk Educators Association, and pursuant to the same process for the past 50 years of the Taylor Law. The role of the Board of Education is to collectively approve or disapprove of the recommendations put forward by the superintendent of schools, within the constraints of the district's existing labor agreements. The Board of Education hopes that this statement sheds some necessary light on the processes and disperses any misconceptions regarding the role of the board. Members of the public are always encouraged to address any questions regarding this or any other board-related matter by email to boardofeducation@stuffentcentral.org. Thank you. Next portion of our meeting is public participation on non-agenda items.
Let me give this signal.
Hi, Mr. Dyer.
My thank you, okay. First of all, in reference to your statement, in reference to what can be said and what can't be said, I feel you're interfering with my First Amendment rights, and I think federal law stands on my side, not your side. And I will come back and I will test that with you. I will test it with you to show you're incorrect, alright? You can't take someone's First Amendment rights. You can't tell me I can't use a name, when that name may be in a specific document in the school district. You can't, you can't refuse me to do that, just like you're using all these names tonight. You can't refuse me the same rights that you have, you can't, and I won't, I won't accept it, and I won't allow it. I will do whatever is necessary. And if you have to take the proper legal action, you will, and I can take the proper legal action, and I would, I would, I would force you to get you personally in this board. I understand you don't care because it's taxpayer money, but I don't care if it's principal.
To clarify the statement, the rights are always there for any member of the community to contact us if it's confidential information, to protect students, students are protected by the FERC law. If it's to protect personnel, they are also protected by federal laws, but we have to protect them. So the statement just stated what laws and what policies, and are happy to receive any issues or complaints from you, and will.
I disagree with, that was the first statement you made, versus that's it. I disagree with you, and I hope you subtract the time when you vote.
Yes. Given back to you.
It seems that you're using executive session time, right? That shouldn't be used for executive session. Those issues should be discussed in the general public, whether the general public talks or not. They're called workshops. There are issues at executive sessions that you should use and go back and talk about, right? And I respect that and understand that. But you use, you're using these, you come back and you say, oh, you get, you get a chance to talk now. And you're not even, they're not even talking about the items in front of us yet. You're not educating the people. It's got to be a more open government now, okay? We've seen enough of this in Rattle Pole, and we have to change. It has to change, and you have to be a part of that change. So I really, it's a fall. So you're getting back to legal advice on that also, if that's legal advice you get. Do this, alright? Now, I understand that we had, we're talking about finance and we're concerned with taxpayer money. I understand it was a name of lacrosse, this lacrosse money that was missing, the money that the school system should have gotten, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Can we get a report on that sometime? Can you fill us in on it, okay? Who's supposed to collect that money? If I'm right or if I'm wrong? But if it's out there, the people have, the public have a right to know. We saw this go on in town council for too long. And it's, and I feel like it's happening here now, curtailing what we can say. Having these secret meetings in the back where everything's discussed. That's not how, that's not how meetings go in this country. And I want, I want to stand. I already talked about the conflict of interest, and I think that's, I think that's, that's just plain, okay? Now, I would talk about, as we all may know, Mr. Biddy received a job from a, from a college in county, and I wish him the best of luck on that job, okay? Here we saw, here we saw it as a community, here we, we threw him to the garbage, and they saw, they saw gold.
This is what I, where I am, because we can't mention names.
What's that?
We cannot mention.
He doesn't work for this, he doesn't work for this school. He's retired.
I still, I still.
Go back to your state, back to your state. Well, good, but you're not protecting him, because that's not what he wants, alright? So, Mr. Biddy found a job, okay, in a college in county, and, and, you know, good for him, alright? We treated, we threw him in the garbage. We saw trash, they saw gold, okay? We traded Dave Booth, alright? Hopefully look in our hearts and look in our souls and realize what we really did here, okay? Because we were wrong. We were wrong as a community, we were wrong as a thing, and, you know, I know Dr. Adams, I know you're in the military, in the army, so was I. You should have been in the Navy, because you lost control of this shit. Thank you.
Any further comments?
My name is Andrea Jaffe, I am the resident of Suffolk.
Sorry, Ms. Jaffe, what's your first name?
Andrea Jaffe, I'm president of Rattle Pole. I've spoken in front of the board many times, but for the benefit of the members, very hardly, I would like to remind and educate the board that under section 3635 of New York State education law, school districts are required to provide transportation in like manner to public school and non-public school students. About two years ago, the board and the district took a decision to curtail the transportation services provided to non-public school students. It's pretty clear that that was a med taken, most likely to try to discourage non-public school students' families from moving to the district, and also to try to shore up or maintain the enrollment in public schools. I'm here to tell you, to update you, that rural strategy has failed. 426 homes were sold in Ironmont in the past three years, 223 in 2017, 190 in 2016. So the numbers are going up for families who are not enrolling their children into their schools, and those are taxpaying families. And as you increase the tax bill by 2.93% this year, those families are going to be more and more aggravated by the fact that their children are being denied the services that are warranted by law and that are not provided. School districts provide late transportation to public schools, they are required by law to provide the same late transportation to private schools, they're not doing that. They are providing multiple buses and business, perhaps, to go see schools under a single bed number. They're not providing the same transportation to private schools who have single bed numbers. Again, I would encourage you to take a page, look around, look to the east, see what is happening there. And being that school's starting, I would like to say, here's a history lesson. Those who choose not to learn from history are going to repeat the mistakes that were made in history. You do not want to encourage a taxpayer revolt by denying services to implement what's going to eventually become minority taxpayer in this district. We are, you know, we believe in Bible, we will multiply, we're doing it, we're coming in, and you guys need to pay attention. So I would encourage you to revise, to review the policies, try to become compliant with the law. We're learning, we're changing, we're investigating, and we need investors in school districts to maintain your taxpayer body happily, rather than not actually. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrea Dale, also being a board, running, the president of the school district. I'm going to keep my comments extremely short today. I know that we just discussed policy, but it seems like we selectively enforce which policies we're going to follow. We're talking about, you know, that we can't mention names, or you can't mention, you know, specific anything that might be identifiable. We're told to contact the board, or we're told to contact the administration. And we do, and those emails don't, they just go unheard, or maybe they go heard, but they go unresponded. So it kind of puts everybody into a catch 22. If we'd like to follow the policy, and we would like to reach out to the school board, we would like to reach out to the administration, and we don't get a response, it kind of puts the public into a quandary as far as how to handle their problems. I know that the school district, like I said, I know that we tout the fact that we have a very good school district here, and we do have a very good school district. If we would handle our laundry, maybe, you know, maybe, you know, between the board and the administration, you know, things might probably go a whole lot smoother for the district, and especially the parents, but more importantly, to the children that it affects that, you know, at this point, if you're not going to respond to emails to parents or whatever else, who are trying to advocate for children or whatever else, I mean, they feel as though they're kind of on a ship, floating, and nobody's around. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You were 3.01.
If any response, I will respond. Every single email that has been received since July 10 by this board has been responded to. I think I go back and forth.
No, but I think I still have.
By the Board of Education.
I can't tell you. No, I can tell you, and I do understand we're not going to go back and forth, but I can tell you that I've sent more than a half dozen emails to the school board, yes, it might not have been since July 10. Listen, Dr.
It's a new board.
But you were on the board previously, so you definitely do know that, you know, that you received those emails.
The board president responds on behalf of the board. I concur with the board members on how we're responding on certain issues. I also investigate with the legal team, I consult with the administration, and then I respond, so it's not overnight, just making the public, you know, notice about that, but everybody gets a response.
Okay, so then what I'll do is I'll forward these emails that I'd sent previously, and hopefully I get a response to them.
Me too.
Hi, my name is Estee.
I'm sorry, can you say?
Estee.
You just called after me?
E-S-T-Y.
Thank you.
So I just, like I noticed, the first time our law transfer decision was March 28. That was the day before the Jewish holiday. Now, they kept on telling me that they sent me my, the mail, January, February, March, and the form of plan. I ended up issued with my mail, so I didn't receive it. The first time I received it was March 28. Now, then the Jewish holiday came, I couldn't send it back, and I tried doing it online, and there was, there was no internet, so I had no access. The first day that I submitted my application was the day after our holiday, which was after April 1. So I kind of missed the hop though, definitely. But again, I didn't get any notice before. The first time I got it was March 28, so I couldn't really give it March 29, because it was a Jewish holiday. So at this moment, I'm doing a translation to my daughter. I've been fighting, I've been emailing people, and they're just like moving me from right to left, and the rest of my week, and I'm doing my translation to my daughter. Their bus does pass my block, I do have three neighbors that don't want the bus, and I just get my translation. I feel like I'm talking to the wall, and... I feel like I'm talking to the wall, and I'm Jewish, I have a holiday, so that's why I couldn't give it up before. And I have proof that the first mail that I got was March twenty-eighth. So, I really couldn't have, and they told me that they sent me one January, first of March, but I cannot date again. I moved, and I issued my mail, so I didn't receive that. So, I will proceed with the application. I'm going to leave for my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you. Kindly, um, do send the email to the administration, copying the Board of Education. Thank you. Any further comments? Being that I see no further comments, we will close the session. Uh, agenda, and we'd like a motion to adjourn. And actually, um, we're adjourning public session, going back into executive, so we're not fully adjourning the meeting. Motion to adjourn executive session to complete the discussion regarding items previously announced. I don't know what to read what they are. These items were read at the, uh, beginning of the meeting today at five-thirty, but in the interest of transparency, going back to discuss certain ones that we didn't get enough time for. Eight, nine, and eleven, is everybody okay with that? Eight, nine, and eleven? The items are, um, reviewing with superintendent of schools, letter from parent complaining about administrator, reviewing with superintendent of schools, and attorney for Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to, um, cross-country email, coach email to parents of student athletes, reviewing with superintendent of schools, and attorney for Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to possible creation of director of school facilities position, reviewing with superintendent of schools, and attorney for Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to public participation portion of, no, we covered that one. That one's done. And finally, reviewing of, with superintendent of schools, attorney, and attorney for Board of Education, legal issues pertaining to adding to board policy twenty-three fifty a board member comment section. Um, move, move, motion? Thank you. Melissa Reamer, and second? Angus McKenzie, all those in favor, you can now start saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.